The City of Frankfurt Board of Commissioners. Today is October 24th. I'll call the meeting to order. And we'll begin tonight with an invocation. Reverend Mary Ann Taylor, thanks for being here again.
Thank you.
Right on time.
If you all would please join me in prayer, or if you prefer to give the gift of your respectful presence during this prayer. "Gracious God, we ask that you would quiet our minds so that we can hear your voice. We give to you any personal concerns that might keep us from concentrating on serving the good of this community. Fill our hearts with gratitude for the blessings we enjoy and with eagerness to share these blessings with people in need. As you made the first humans your co-stewards of creation, let us too be such caregivers that we might prove worthy of your final benediction. Well done, good and faithful servants. In your holy name we pray. Amen."
I should have said it's South Frankfurt Presbyterian.
Yes, thank you.
Stand up for the pleasure of ladies.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'll ask the city clerk to call the roles.
Commissioner Rosen.
Present.
Commissioner Unger.
Present.
Commissioner May.
Present.
Commissioner Waldridge.
Present.
Mayor Wilkerson.
Present. Start with ceremonial recognition. Commissioner Unger.
I wanted to mention a couple awesome events we had this past weekend. And I wanted to start with thanking the police officers, emergency management, and other city staff for helping out with the Kentucky History Half Marathon, 5K and 10K, because that was an awesome event to get the weekend started off, as well as thanking city staff for organizing and hosting the Haunting on the Hill at Fort Hill. I think it was probably the most people I've ever seen up there, because typically I'm just going up to hike or run, and there were people everywhere you turned. So it was amazing. Thanks to Dr. Ellie Paskins Wagner, everybody at Capital City Museum, park staff, everybody, community partners. It was an awesome event, so.
Commissioner.
Thank you.
And actually, I was starting off as the first. Congratulations was just a stellar well-done on the Haunting on the Hill. I don't know if we can say enough. It was absolutely amazing. It was a great addition to Frankfurt and Franklin County for our community. Yes, they were able to get more people up on the hill, which were great, but Alex Cunningham, Sean Pickens, Dr. L., I mean, you guys did a fantastic job with all the staff that was there, running the tractors up and down the hill, the parking, everyone that was over at Buffalo Trace dealing with parking. It was stellar, and I am so excited, so excited to see what happens next year, as it's going to grow. So I just cannot say enough that it's probably one of the best events that we've had this year, I would say. So I'm so proud of staff in that event as well. I also wanted to say congratulations to Franklin County's volley girls volleyball team. They play second in district. It was an amazing game. They fought all the way to the end. It was two sets to two sets, and it came down to the third set, and I think it ended up, the score ended up being 20-25. Those girls can play some volleyball, so I'm hoping they'll make it further in the regional, and that maybe everyone will be able to come out and see them. So it was an amazing event there. And then, information I want to pass along, in regards to our town gown relationship with Kentucky State University. Kentucky State University will be playing University of Kentucky on November 3rd. And so we want everybody with their green and gold to head to UK. I spoke with the basketball coach this evening, and you can go to www.kysuthorobreds.com, then click on the link for tickets. They will go on sale tomorrow at noon. Tickets will go on sale tomorrow at noon, so hopefully everyone will come out, support that game. There'll be a $75 ticket for the lower arena, and that will also come with a ticket to go to one of the Bourbon Places in downtown Lexington, and then it'll be a free drink ticket with that. There's also a $35 ticket for those that would like to go and maybe not spend so much, for those that have larger families and things of that nature. So I hope that everyone can come, wear their green and gold, and let's work our way into that stadium and make it green and gold, and not see as much blue and white.
Any other ceremonial recognition? No? Yes, City Mayor?
Thinking about the Thorabreds, they're tied for first place in the SIAC West Division. So Kentucky State University will host Tuskegee University this Saturday to, for the championship game, championship football game. So go Thorabreds! They'll represent the West Division. So we wish them good luck, and wear more green and gold.
And it's Senior Day.
And it's Senior Day.
It's Senior Day.
I plan to attend, yes, sir.
I just have one announcement reminder, which is, voting, early voting starts November 3rd, and everyone should vote in this upcoming election.
Thank you for that. Any others?
Well, just one kind of obvious one, which is Happy Halloween.
And when does Halloween start? Someone asked me that.
Six o'clock, I think.
Six o'clock, okay.
On Monday.
On Monday.
Halloween.
On Halloween. Right. We'll move on to citizens' comments. Your time.
Oh, I have one more. Sorry. I'm sorry, I have one more. We have a newly married husband in the back there, Zachary. He got married over the weekend to his wonderful bride, so shout out to Zachary and his beautiful bride. We wish you the best and the happiest life moving forward, as you grow your family later on in life and you guys travel. So congratulations to Zachary back there with Frankfurt Plant Board. He is here all the time, so congratulations.
Congrats.
I knew I was forgetting something. You're very welcome.
And we have three listed for citizens' comments for the Capitol Expo. You're welcome to come speak now, or we could consider, it's on the agenda for later.
We can do that.
Okay. That's okay?
Yes, sir.
So next, we'll have Teresa Barton and LeAnn Snelling. Are you coming together?
Yes.
Okay. About the Umbrella Project and the rules, five minutes.
Sure.
Laura's timing.
I'm your members of the commission. Thank you so much for having us.
I wanted to just give you a big thank you for the Umbrella Project and the work that your staff have been doing. We've been planning it now for several months, I think. We kind of started about March, April, in that timeframe, and between Blair and Ray Richardson. It's just been phenomenal. So I wanted to give you a quick update. We're into the, obviously, October-November timeframe. You may remember that timeline. Procure the umbrellas. Oh, I left it back there. I have to go get it. The installation will be the last week in October, and then the dedication ceremony, we'll talk about that in just a moment, is November 9th. If you'll please mark your calendars, I think it's at, I'll give you more detail in just a moment. It starts at 5:00, and there'll be different timeframes for different sponsors and levels of folks, and then we'll have the actual, either the umbrella opening or the ribbon cutting. We're trying to figure all that full detail out. Please mark your calendar for November 9th. That'll be the donor appreciation event, and that is a conjunction with candlelight, kickoff, and then the homelessness awareness month is in November, and then the Empower Her group will be there with us as well. So, real quick, this is the umbrella, and everyone says it's bad luck to open it inside, but it is Halloween. So these are specialty umbrellas that Blair researched, other locations that have done them, and I'll just do it anyway. So these umbrellas will be hanging above Catfish Alley, so we're really excited about what it's going to look like and just the art installation, but more importantly, the benefit for the Cares Coalition. So I think LeAnn's going to give you a little more update on the sponsorships.
So we had three levels of sponsorship. One was the $5,000 Alley sponsor, the $2,500 anchor sponsor, and a $1,000 light sponsor. So far, we actually have one $5,000 sponsor. First Christian Church stepped up very quickly for that. We have four $2,500 sponsors. Taylor &amp; Natalie Marshall, LaCount Johnson-Taylor Funeral Home, Franklin County Fiscal Court, and the Commonwealth Credit Union. And we have one $1,000 sponsor, Kelly &amp; Vince Lang. We still have a couple of other sponsorships that are, they're a little tentative, we feel like they're going to come through, and there's still time for individual donations as well. If anybody does want to donate, if you'll go to our Facebook page, Umbrella Project Facebook page, Give Me Shelter, there's a QR code that you can do, or you can contact one of us, and we can get a check, or whatever we need to do. We're guessing we're going to come in somewhere around $20,000, the way it looks right now.
Great. Awesome. We've had a few other contributions as well, but key much of it, that's where we are. And of course, the City of Frankfurt for your in-kind contribution. Blair, I know, is working on a final plaque, that once we get everyone in and all the sponsorships, their names will appear. Of course, the City of Frankfurt will be one as well. Absolutely. So, real quick, we will get this distributed. Once it's final, it's almost final, we're just doing the final proofing, but this will be the 5:00 event, that will be the meet and greet, and then at 5:30, there will be the project, I'm trying to read the presentation, and then there will actually be an official either ribbon cutting or something right there at Catfish Alley at 6:00 PM on November 9th. So please mark your calendars. So, are there any questions?
How many umbrellas are needed to complete the project? And will that all be covered underneath of the, did you say 20,000 or something?
Yes. Somewhere between 30 to 40 actual physical umbrellas.
I believe it's 32.
Okay. I can't remember the diagram. Ray Richardson could tell you everything.
The projected project cost was somewhere around 7,000 or a little below. I'm fairly certain we're going to come in below that. So we're hoping to be able to give the Cares Coalition somewhere around $15,000 in startup cost.
And the Bluegrass Community Foundation, as you all know, they stepped up. We were a little bit concerned about the administrative costs. We want to try to keep those to a minimum. They stepped up, and it's virtually nothing. So we're pretty excited that most every penny will go toward the Cares Coalition, once you get the expenses away. And you'll handle a lot of it in-kind from design and installation. Okay?
Well, I just want to say thank you for stepping up and doing this project. I really respect both of you guys for doing this. It's been a great project. I think it's going to be amazing at the end, so I just thank you for stepping up and doing that in our community, as well as stepping up to run for office. So I appreciate you and stepping up and doing that as well. I know we'll be in good hands with your leadership and all that you've done for Franklin County through the judge exec position and other things you've done in this community. So thank you for representing Frankfurt, because we have some things that we would want that senator position to help support. So we want to say thank you very much for doing that. And I only say, I say that because last week, we did have your opponent in, so we won't say, but I appreciate you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that, and it's truly an honor to run for office. I think you all know I'm a lifelong resident here, and everything that's important to the city and the county is certainly something that will be my priority when I'm elected. I did look quickly at your Commonwealth Alliance, and there's not one thing on there that I want to address. I'll be happy to do that as well. But thank you for the opportunity, and I'm honored to run. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate it. Bye-bye.
Okay. And Mary Ann Taylor, you were here to, she was here, sorry.
She was here.
I now realize what's going on. Look first. Okay, we'll move on to a presentation. Katie Richardson of National Renewable Energy Laboratory on the line.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Katie Richardson is our Enrel Project Manager, and this is a draft report on the potential pathways for preliminary for Frankfurt's city operations. We're talking about city operations to get, as they will need to be a partner in our efforts to achieve this goal. And also, this will be great to hear your feedback and input as we appropriated, you all appropriated $150,000 for continuation of Enrel work, and this should give you some more information to think about moving forward.
Thanks so much. Laura, can everyone move in? Great. Mayor Wilkerson, commissioners, it's a pleasure to be presenting in front of you again. I think the last time we spoke was mid-July, and we have since that time really taken a deep dive into the risks, the benefits, the opportunities, the costs, and all of those different factors to think through how Frankfurt can realize 100% clean electricity for the city. Just as a reminder, Enrel is the nation's only national laboratory focused exclusively on renewable energy and energy efficiency. I've been there for about four and a half years. It's been my total pleasure to get to work with Laura and her staff and the commissioners that we've had a chance to engage. Really appreciate everyone's work and input to realize the report. The report is a draft. It was sent around in advance for this meeting. I think it's running at 26 pages now. We've covered a lot of ground. The presentation I have here for you today just hits the highlights, so I hope I can do so, and please feel free to interrupt with any questions that you may have as we go along. So just as a reminder, this is all part of that Enrel scope of work. Last time we spoke, we were most of the way through task one, and this is really addressing task two, that development of those pathways. How can we sort of realize 100% clean electricity for the city by 2023? As a reminder, we have one more task in front of us for this first phase of our work together, and that is looking at that 2030 goal, community-wide. So more coming on that front. In the meantime, I did want to sort of start our conversation today with just a snapshot of the equity picture in the Frankfurt area. Unsurprisingly, this is true across communities in the nation, there are certainly parts of the City of Frankfurt where social vulnerability measures are significantly higher than not just the rest of the county, but in some cases, in the rest of the country. So here, we're just highlighting Census Tract 712, if you're familiar with that area. It's sort of north of the river between two roads whose names I forget, so apologies for not knowing the local geography as well as you do. But you see sort of household composition and disability, socioeconomic factors, really pinging above 90%. And what that means is that this Census Tract is more vulnerable than all but less than 10% of the rest of the country. So certainly, we have equity at the top of our minds throughout this work, and there's sort of a suite of things that are our best practices when it comes to equity, and these are outlined in the report. I think one really positive development, even since we spoke last, is the passage of the Inflation Reduction Act. This will set out some tax credits that whatever sort of project we might pursue together could take benefit from these tax credits, if the project is serving low-income communities. We certainly also understand that engaging affected stakeholders is an important part of the success of a project, so thinking through what that might look like in your community in these particularly impacted Census Tracts is important. There's lots the city can do in terms of access and workforce, and leveraging ongoing projects to address this equity component. So we have a huge stack of information around equity, and I'm happy to dive in with anyone who wants more info. We also understand as an underlying assumption for all of our analysis, that energy efficiency is an important component of realizing a cost-effective impact for any project. Any energy efficiency conservation measure that the study undertakes will ultimately save the city down the road, and there are a whole host of technologies that we see as net positive, if those are, if those investments are made. The payback periods, of course, vary, but for the purposes of this report, we assume that the city would engage in some sort of energy audit, and that up to 10% of present energy bills could be saved through investing in energy conservation measures. And so that reduces the amount total that the city needs to generate for renewable, from a renewable energy source. Just want to highlight on the chart to the right, lots of really great opportunities to engage in technologies like interior LED lighting, outdoor LED lighting, window film, insulation, smart thermostats, et cetera, are all things that can realize great payback periods and be a worthwhile investment. We understand from our analysis from last time, and just as a reminder, that an 8.2 megawatt solar farm could provide 100% clean electricity, as long as we're looking at energy efficiency for the operations, and that that would take up 40 to 80 acres. You know, sort of, probably 40 is a bit aggressive, 80 is a bit conservative, so somewhere in that range would be what would be needed to build a straight solar facility to meet those needs. So what we did in this next set of analysis is really identify different pathways. How do we get from where we are today to realizing 100% renewable energy generation for the study? We considered renewable energy credits. We considered a utility-scale solar approach. We considered a blend of the two, so we'll take a look at each of those. It's worth saying, though, if, you know, we're talking about, you know, a cake, and how many layers are we going to add up to have our cake? Any cake can be frosted, any cake can have sprinkles, and those things can include rooftop PV, solar plus storage, community solar solutions, all of those are things that the city can continue to pursue and might reduce the total that you would need to spend on either REX or utility-scale solar. But it's worth saying that it's not cost-efficient to serve the entirety of city operations needs with rooftop PV. So I just wanted to sort of make sure that we were clear on that topic. So taking a look first at renewable energy credits, this is an opportunity to purchase a certificate that says renewable generation has happened somewhere. It does not necessarily mean that generation is happening anywhere near the city or in the state, or even in your utility market, nor does it state that that generation wouldn't have otherwise been on the market, if that, hopefully that makes sense. The benefit, I think, to consider with renewable energy credits is that the timeline here could be very short, it's completely dependent on city procurement processes, and could easily sort of be put in place in time for that 2023 goal. However, Enrel in general finds that, you know, the market prices on REX purchases are fairly volatile. We see those prices increasing over time, and those prices are in addition to your regular energy bills. So for whatever period of time you would engage with REX, you would be paying a green premium in order to certify that renewable generation is taking place. So in no way is there an opportunity to save money through REX. From an equity standpoint, it all depends on how those additional costs are passed on to citizens, and, you know, there certainly may not be any direct impact on air quality or carbon emissions in the local area when you think about where REX may be purchased. The second pathway that we analyzed is looking at utility-scale solar arrays. This, you might have in mind, the Ashwood facility that is planned, that would count as a utility-scale solar facility, as would any other facility that might be built or imagined. Enrel defines utility scales as anything over 5 megawatts. So 8.2 megawatts is sort of, you know, barely there. Sometimes utility-scale solar facilities are 100 megawatts or more. I think Ashwood is 86 for the planned facility. So just to put that a little bit in context for you, we were able to conduct a cost analysis. Typically, the structure of these deals, it's important to note, is that a developer carries that estimated cost for development, that 8.7 million. They would be responsible for identifying the, you know, purchase of all the equipment, the operations, the construction, all those pieces. In general, it is not always the case that every solar facility ends up being profitable, and so there are developers that carry portfolios of these facilities. It is possible for the city to own, build, construct, operate, do all of it themselves. In general, we, I would say that that's a higher-risk activity than engaging a third-party private developer to do so. Certainly with IRA, it's worth saying, when we began this work, I could only guarantee a 22% tax credit on a facility like this. Now we're looking at a baseline of 30%, with potential adders additionally on top of that, up to 70%, depending on the facility you're building. So really, quite a cost difference from when we even began this work together, which is great news. It is worth saying, though, that this timeline piece is an important component. There's a lot to think about when it comes to utility-scale solar. The technical generation potential, the siting considerations, any permitting that's required, and the interconnection, of course, to the network, or the grid. And this can be, in general, a multi-year process. Possibly, Ashwood is closer to this finish line than if you were to start from scratch. In terms of benefits, there's a lot to think about here. Certainly, you know, the, when I think about the pricing, this is the most cost-efficient, effective pathway for the city, to pursue a utility-scale PV facility of some sort. Certainly, this could be done independently by the city, or it could be done in collaboration with FPV and KIMEA, but it's possible, in those negotiations with developers, to secure, in some cases, community development incentives. So think, you know, adding solar and storage to your fire station to have resiliency, that kind of thing, can sometimes be part of these deals, especially for larger facilities. It's also worth saying that the larger the facility that is considered for build, the more effective that price is, and so more savings would be realized for the city. It is also important to note that the prices on the previous slide do not include the customer charges that FPV would need to continue to charge to keep the lights on when the sun is down, and to make sure that the grid is operating at its appropriate frequency and keep those transmission and distribution lines operational. So there, all of those considerations still apply, but this would be a pathway to generation. So want to emphasize, of the sort of options considered, this is the most cost-effective for the city to realize 100% clean energy for its operations. We're talking about a ground-mounted facility, certainly could be augmented by rooftop, but this would be the cheapest way to do 8.2 megawatts on the ground. And again, the larger the system, you know, if you begin looking at other customers, other partners, right, the more cost-effective this choice is going to become. This is a pathway under which, under the right circumstances, the city may be able to save money. And I want to emphasize that the costs of construction, that $8 million, are not carried by the city or FPV, they'd be carried by a developer partner. And then sufficiently large sites may be available within city, county, and service territory limits. Of course, if the city cannot identify a way to secure utility-scale solar generation by the end of 2023, you might imagine a blended approach between the two options, where you would invest in REX in the meantime, and the utility-scale solar facility could come online. So in terms of action steps moving forward, you know, the city may work with the plant board to identify the viability of the Ashwood facility, or if there is some other way to secure energy from that or any other utility-scale solar facility in time for the 2023 goal. If that's not possible, the city may independently, or in collaboration, again, with the board and KIMEA, de-risk, prepare, and issue an RFP or other mechanism for securing other generation from a new solar facility. And in that case and scenario, REX could be purchased on a short-term basis to realize the city's goals. In either case, I mentioned the tax credit previously, it would be, you know, sort of best practice to maximize those tax credits. This is what your development partners are really good at doing, it's their bread and butter, so it's something you can sort of depend on. Again, there's that 30% baseline under the new tax law. Much of, I wrote here Franklin County, but I meant Frankfurt, yeah, Franklin County, that's right. Much of the entire county may qualify for that 10% boost for energy communities on the basis of what percentage of workers have been participating in that energy economy. And then similarly, there's a 10% boost if the facility is made with domestic content. There are additional boosts for smaller facilities, so if you choose to break up the 8.2 megawatts with a few community projects, there may be an additional tax credit to be realized there, depending on the exact plans. It's also worth saying that packaging projects together, if you choose to do a series of smaller projects, will realize some cost efficiencies. I also want to just spend a couple of minutes on this clean energy for city operations goal by 2030, and I just want to point out the distinction between And I just want to point out the distinction between electricity and energy. Here we mean the energy necessary to drive our cars, the energy necessary to keep our homes warm during the winter. All of those components are part of what we mean by making sure that the city is realizing clean energy at 100% level by 2030 for its operations. We did take a look at the gas consumption, natural gas consumption. Not surprisingly, you see peaks in the colder months. And you can sort of take a deeper dive into where that's coming from across the city. And you might imagine then, over time, you know, after an energy efficiency audit and some improvements that could be made on the heating front, that electric sourced heat pumps would be sort of the replacement technology that we'd be moving toward over the next eight years. Likewise, in the city fleet, the city has, I think, 296 vehicles across 23 departments of varying ages. As those vehicles are cycling out, reaching their lifetime, we would imagine them moving to electric vehicle sources. Certainly for those light-duty vehicles, that's easy to do. So, let's see, I don't want to spend too much time with that, but just the action item here, again, from the report is to replace those electric vehicles with natural gas built-in heating over time, along with water heaters with those electric heat pumps as they come to the end of their life cycle. Lots of opportunities, I think, for energy efficiency here, so that should probably be part of a forthcoming audit. You know, we would look for that replacement at the end of the day. There may be quite a few resources to consider through either the bipartisan infrastructure law or the Inflation Reduction Act that could help as we begin to think about fleet replacement. Certainly, there's a lot around school buses. There's much more to come around the placement of charging stations. So definitely something for the city's grant writer to take a look at. And beginning planning how that might become a part of future planning, like the new transit center, et cetera. And one of the statistics that I love from the broader look is that if we imagine a widespread electrification scenario, which we believe we're moving towards as a country, a quarter of all cars on the road may be electric vehicles by 2030 in the county. So that is a pretty high number. And so thinking through what planning is necessary in order to support that transition is going to be interesting. Just a few final action steps. Certainly, what I've just listed is lift for any community. So it's possible city staff might need to be identified or contractors may need to be hired to support the implementation of all of the tasks and action items in the report. If that's the direction the city chooses to go. We also have, just for your awareness, shared a spreadsheet of high-priority opportunities to apply for federal support. There's quite a bit that's still happening in this space. Department of Energy has not fully figured out how to implement all of the components of the law. So there's more forthcoming, there's more evolving all the time. And so there are some resources that are available for your staff to continue to keep an eye on that after our engagement has ended. But certainly, that's worth checking for, you know, whether it's energy efficiency or electric vehicle charging stations or rooftop solar or storage, there's lots of opportunity to engage. And just from a next steps with Enrel stage, I've already mentioned, we still have that ongoing Phase One Task Three to look at the community-wide picture. I've also flagged for Laura and her staff a couple of no-cost opportunities from Enrel for deeper technical assistance. And so those are application opportunities you're welcome to pursue. And then for our Phase Two deeper work, there's lots of opportunity. I almost hesitate to put anything on this slide because the discussion, I think, is wide open to be directed in the way that the city best sees that we can be useful for you. So I think I will stop there and I'll be happy to take any questions. I know that it was a fast presentation, but thank you so much for your attention.
Any questions for Katie? Thank you, Katie. That was good information.
No questions, but I just want to say thank you to city staff and to folks at Enrel for helping get this together and prepared and the hard work that went into it. And I think it's very exciting to see, there's so much information there that I think covers not just the topic of renewable, but helps us in achieving a lot of our strategic plan when we talk about equity and as we build in this community, making sure that we move forward together. And this data, this information helps us make sure that we make those decisions in a way that's beneficial to everybody.
Yes, and I would add to that. I'm especially pleased with working on energy efficiency and finding ways that we can use energy more wisely.
Katie, I just have a question on the, when you speak about the Ashwood facility, is it, you're thinking that the city would just, we would work through the Frankfurt Plant Board to, we know that some percentage of the Ashwood production will be, a majority will go to the Frankfurt Plant Board, is that right? And that we would just get an allocation of that that would be dedicated to city operations? If that made sense?
That's right. That's one pathway forward, correct. I'm trying to remember the exact percentage. I think all of the facility is now being dedicated to Kyme. And so proportionally, Frankfurt Plant Board has a portion of that, I believe.
And then if we do need to use any other, and I guess, energy, I guess dirty energy in the meantime, we would get REX to, I guess, after the fact, once we know what we've used, we would purchase REX to offset?
That's right. That would be the one in approach, pathway C. So it would provide an opportunity for you to realize your goal on your timeline if utility scale solar does not come online in, you know, quickly enough. And then you would sort of choose to stop buying those REX once you have the commitment from a facility that generation was being dedicated to city effort.
Any others? No? Good first start. Thank you, Katie.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Doctor Richards.
Katie's just fine. Thank you all.
Thank you, Katie.
And before we, moving on to the, before we get to the consent calendar, do we have any objections to moving number nine on the consent calendar to a discussion item or action item?
Need a second?
Do we need a motion on that? I think, anybody have any objections to that?
No objection.
And do we have any objections to moving?
Number 10.
Action item number 10 forward as well.
Oh, the candlelight?
What's that?
Candlelight.
No, the resolution.
Action item number 10.
Action item number 10 to be next, so that Mr. Poe can.
Oh, that's fine.
You want to move that to before the consent calendar?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, no objections. All right, so we'll move forward, action item number 10. To now.
Okay, pink dress.
So we're gonna.
You want to read out the resolution? We're going to move action item number 10.
So action item number 10, we have a resolution.
Yes.
The City of Frankfurt Board of Commissioners formally apologize for any part that an elected or appointed official in the City of Frankfurt played in the lynchings of John Maxie and Marshall Boston. And that is looking for an emotion.
Motion to approve.
Motion Commissioner Unger and Second Commissioner Rosen. Is there any discussion on that?
Are you going to read it with him?
I don't know. Is that customary, where we read it with?
Read the resolution.
We usually don't, but it's up to you.
I don't know. Do you want it? I'll read it out. So this is a resolution of the City of Frankfurt Board of Commissioners formally apologizing for any part that an elected or appointed official in the City of Frankfurt played in the lynchings of John Maxie and Marshall Boston. Whereas the crime of lynching was widely known to occur across the United States from Reconstruction through the middle of the 20th century. And whereas lynching was a form of terrorism practiced predominantly against African-Americans, it devastated families and cut short thousands of lives. And whereas, on August 15, 1894, Marshall Boston was hanged from the singing bridge after being accused of a crime, along with hundreds of bullets fired into his body by a white mob, without the benefit of corroborating evidence and denial of his constitutional rights to a fair trial. And whereas, on June 3, 1909, John Maxie was abducted by a white mob who stormed the jail after being accused of a crime. The mob attempted to hang Mr. Maxie from the singing bridge. However, the rope broke and Mr. Maxie was forced to climb up the girders. And then the mob pushed him to his death, again, without any corroborating evidence and denial of his constitutional rights to a fair trial. And whereas, the City of Frankfurt Board of Commissioners desires to publicly acknowledge these facts and offer a formal apology for any role that the city played in these events. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the City of Frankfurt, Kentucky, does apologize on behalf of any appointed or elected public official who participated in, witnessed, facilitated, censored, suppressed, or was in any way involved in the lynchings of Marshall Boston and John Maxie and the subsequent failure to prosecute those fully involved to the fullest extent of the law. That's the resolution. Any discussion on that? We have a motion, we have a second?
I guess I can bring up that we just appreciate Mr. Poe bringing this up, starting for being one of the co-founders for Frankfurt on Race Relations. So we thank you for your strength and your spirit of continuing this forward to its fruition and that we will be recognized in, is it Montgomery, Alabama, I believe?
Yes.
Montgomery, Alabama, in the museum that we, Franklin, the City of Frankfurt is moving forward and supporting and trying to correct what we can and what we see forward. So we thank you for your group and we thank you for the community that came out and supported the event on Saturday. It was a lovely event, very inspiring. And it was just great to see the diverse group that was there.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Any other discussion after nine? Let's see, the clerk to call for a vote.
Commissioner Rosen?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Waldrich?
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Yes.
And that motion carries. And we'll adopt that resolution. And we'll move on. Should we go to the consent calendar? Or since we have a representation of the Capitol Expo, do you want to move that to?
We can, yes.
We want to move that up to now. Would you like to make a presentation? Five-minute presentation, just as you were going to do for Citizens Comments. If we have questions, we'll ask. So we're moving consent calendar number nine to now. Discussion, possible action. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Becky Long. I'm the secretary and a board member for Capitol Expo. And I have Bo Sutherland here with me today. He's also a member of our board. Kind of just roped him in recently and we're glad to have him. He has some great ideas. We are on your agenda today is that we are asking for your approval to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the city to work closely together with the city officials to set up a downtown festival, bringing back Capitol Expo. We are in the beginning stages. We really can't begin anything until we get this MOU with the city. We are and have been a festival since 1974. And actually, 1973, I take that back. That's the year I was born, so don't do the math. 1973, so this was originally a festival that was developed by the Governor Carroll's administration. After that first year, it was passed over into an independent board. It's a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit organization. We're self-sustaining. Any money that we earn during our festival event goes right back into the next year. Our festival encompasses a lot of different things. You'll see on the listing here that, you know, we do our fireworks. We have our free children's festival on Saturday that's sponsored by the National Guard and DARE, the Franklin County Sheriff, and State Trooper Island. We will have free fireworks on that Saturday evening. We do a free Frankfurt Idol competition. And in one year, I chaired that. Actually, I chaired it for 10 years. We give back at least $3,000 to people who are competing in this. Each person gets a prize for first and second just coming to a venue. The night of competition, we're giving out at least $1,000, $1,500 to vocalists that are from Franklin County or surrounding. We offer free concerts for, and that allows local bands and musicians to come, be on our main stage. And I think we're going to have maybe two other stages. Again, we're working on that and getting that together. I feel like I'm doing all the talking. Would you like to add something?
No. She mentioned that we're self-sustaining, but we also give money back to the community also. We've given over, I think, $7,000 to We Want to Play to high school students that can't afford. That's over the years.
That's over the years. And it may be just a little bit more, maybe a little modest on that. We Want to Play actually depends on these types of fundraisers to fund their endeavor to help pay children or youth in high school that cannot normally pay.
For their equipment.
Well, to choose to play the sports. Your high schools now, I think, charge 40 bucks in order to play high school sports. So We Want to Play really depends on these types of fundraisers. I've done this seven times for them. So I'd like to continue to do that. I actually did hold the Funnel Cake 5K one year that we did not have Expo. We were planning to come back with Expo. COVID kind of hit, kind of put things a little bit in a curveball. And since COVID, I know We Want to Play is really needing that kind of stuff. So we'd like to bring that back this next year. We are, we have a fully new elected board that we have some really good members that have some great ideas. And again, we are still in the planning phases at this point, but we are going to bring back the goodies. We're talking about. One minute. Oh, thank you. I'm sorry. I could talk about this all day long. But I have been with the Capitol Expo for, I think, maybe 14 years now. And it's been a pleasure to be a part of this board. And I look forward to working with the city, working with Blair, and coming up with a festival that is going to kind of be like a small-town festival again. I've enjoyed going to some other cities and going to their festivals. And we are the capital of Kentucky. Downtown is the heart of Frankfurt, and that's where we belong. We would love to come put on a festival and.
To support the local businesses.
Absolutely, and.
And showcase what we have.
Yeah, absolutely. So I will go ahead and I guess leave it at that. Unless, do you want to add anything?
No, I'm sure our minutes about it.
I'm sure we have questions, so you'll get more time here.
Absolutely.
Anybody want to start? Yeah, can we start?
Thank you both for being here today. Greatly appreciate it. One of the things that I know will come up with having the Expo Festival going on downtown, making sure that we do take care of those local businesses that.
Absolutely.
Are down there. What, I know you're saying you're still in the planning phase, and this is the first part of it, where we can start having those conversations. Do you plan, have you already reached out to make sure that those individuals have a seat at the table to be a part of that conversation and make sure?
We haven't yet because, again, this is the planning stages. Now, I think our goal is to have it on Broadway on the side where the Capitol is.
Not on business side.
Not on the business side. We're going to be on, I guess, I would say, the east side of Broadway on the Capitol. That was suggested to us because of the local businesses and that traffic would stay open all the time. We would be on the opposite side. And we wanted to go there because that also opens up the businesses in downtown Frankfurt for the people that will come to this. I just came from Midway Festival that they had up there. And they, I talked to the businesses up there that were, you know, behind the tents.
Right.
And they saw, you know, they had a big increase in business because people was wanting to go into their shops too.
Sure.
And that's what we're going to, that's what we're striving for to do, is to get the local businesses involved so they can, you know, reap the rewards of people. When we went, when I went to Midway Festival, when I come out of Midway, we was there early, at 10 o'clock. We had left and they was lined up all the way to the interstate to get into the city of Midway. And that's, that's our plan. That's what we'd like to see here. That's what we're going to strive for.
Yeah, and it brings tourism to Frankfurt. So, I mean, it, it can bring a lot to us. But one of the things that, when you say that, with the mixed district where we're doing the EDC, this will allow us to use that EDC. EDC, and the businesses downtown that are a part of that will get that, they'll get that benefit big time from that, because we are not in the business of selling alcohol. We're not going to do that. So we're going to leave that up to your downtown businesses. We're also going to spread it out just a little bit. So the goal is, it's not all going to be clumped in one spot, okay? The goal is that we're going to spread it out a little bit, we're going to work with the state, maybe doing the parking garages, doing some shuttling there. It's not going to be a pile-on downtown Frankfurt situation. We're going to spread it out. People that want to go to a car show can go over to this area. I believe we have a sponsor that's going to sponsor a band, so they may have a band over in this area, have a car show here, have a carnival here. You know, it, we're, again, in the beginning phases of that, and this MOU will give us that opportunity to work with the city and get that infrastructure started or planned out.
Is it fair to say when, and this is just for people to understand, when you're saying the east side, so you want to shut down the side that the old Capitol's on, that part of the road, but the right side of the road that the businesses are set on Broadway will stay open for at least traffic to go one way-
Absolutely.
-but it would not be able to curve around. So you want to close that down, and so in your ideas, I'm gathering that something may be here and something may be there, we maybe not know those specific locations-
Absolutely.
-but it seems like that this may run from possibly the farmer's market all the way to State Stadium is what I've sort of read in a way.
Yes, ma'am.
And have we thought through, you know, the logistics of that and crossing High Street and things of that nature? I know I just brought this up to you, but-
It's okay.
-you know, just knowing how we're getting from one place to another, or is that, okay, I'm going to go, let's say, to farmer's market for the car show, and then I'm going to have to drive over to State Stadium instead of making that a full walkability thing?
Blair had sent an email to us last week that once we get this MOU, we're going to have monthly meetings with Mr. Russell and his staff and go from there, because at the end of the day, that's what's going to dictate where we can, what we can do, on what we're allowed to do, you know, to make things safe for everybody.
Yes, and again, like, if we, if it's set, the goal is if we kind of do it that way, you're not closing it all off, and you would have, I get the safety part, and we're definitely going to work on that. I mean, we are going to look at that for sure, because that's the most important thing. But it's to still kind of have some way for traffic to move through downtown. It's not all shut down. So, and again, we're going to be working very closely with Public Works, with you guys, and Emergency Management with Blair, to make sure that it, it all comes together, and everybody can come down and have a good time and be safe.
So my follow-up question. Okay. My follow-up question would be, and I like the fact that you want to keep one side open, but I also don't like the fact that we're going to keep moving traffic there if we're going to have this many people down in downtown. Because I could just see now, you know, we have our kids, and we know how fast they run, and people are used to having festivals or things closed and both sides closed, and someone just run out in the middle of the street, and so that also, you know, may keep Brick Alley open, and then just people, I just think that we need to think through that as well, and I'm sure that's on Blair's-
Our logistics problem, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Our logistic problems are, we're having, I mean, this is going to be a two-day festival, Friday and Saturday, which means probably, this is tentative, the vendors would have to come in Thursday night, we're throwing out after 5:00 p.m. to set up their stuff. I think we're trying to be as generous as we can to the businesses on the other side. That was actually brought up by staff to try to leave that one side open for emergency personnel and stuff like that. If we can close both sides, hey, we'll use it.
Well, it is a two-day period, and that was a concern as well, I know.
Absolutely.
But it just worries me, maybe during the heavy populated times that we close that and, you know, or whatever, maybe we can look at that.
And that may be the thing to do, is to close that. Like, if, you know, we usually have two good bands on Friday night and Saturday night, we could be, that would be the time when we are going to have the most traffic to close the road at that time, but like during the day-
Right.
-if we're not full of people, then leave that kind of open so that people can kind of come through. But that's something that we are going to definitely work closely with your staff to make sure that that is going to be doable, you know? And, and again, that's the kind of things we need to know and hear, so that when we get into this and we get it set up, we, we have that covered, so.
Commissioner Unger.
Thanks for being here, guys.
Thank you, thanks for having us.
It sounds like, you know, if we approve the MOU, then it just gives us a chance to all start talking and planning, and I think that'd be good for everybody and beneficial for all of downtown, you know, state employees that work downtown on Fridays trying to get in and out, and as well as the businesses. So I think it's a great idea to start planning sooner than later.
Absolutely.
And I'm also glad to see the Funnel Cake 5K come back, because that was my baby the first year.
It was, yes, we worked together in that first year.
Yeah, that'll be awesome to have that 5K take place again, so.
We've had people come from Texas to get a Funnel Cake and do the 5K.
There you go.
It's a big deal. Tourism to Frankfurt, there you go.
That'd be great.
Yeah, yes, thank you, thank you.
And I think, I don't know if everyone else can speak on, but we received a couple of emails of concern, you know, vendors and downtown business owners and a couple of other people, but they really didn't go into detail of what the issues were, they just said that they just want to be able to discuss it and talk about it. One wanted to review and comment, so they really didn't go into details of any of the issues that they had, per se. I think it was just like Commissioner Unger shared, that they want to be a part of that conversation.
Absolutely.
And knowing what's going to happen, when's going to happen, and how they can make it better with their business and things of that nature. So I do like the idea of the mixed district, of you allowing our businesses to serve the alcohol versus bringing in the, I think it was a truck or something like that, so that way they know that they get that, because to be honest, that's a lot of business, that's a lot of money for the businesses and being able to, to bring people in for that. So I do appreciate that, so I thought that, that's a plus, so it's where they make a lot of money.
Yeah. Anybody else?
I think Emery had a question.
Well, just along the same lines as what Patricia and, well, I think everyone was saying, is to involve the downtown businesses that are impacted every time Broadway is closed.
Oh, I understand, and that's why we're trying to figure out what's the best way to do that. Absolutely, I mean, they are welcome to the table anytime. We want to work together. We do not want it to be an issue. We want to be able to put on a good event here in Frankfurt for our community and do a lot of good, because we do help a lot of other charitable groups, so that's why I do it, I love that part of it. But, yeah, this would just give us the opportunity to get started, figure this out, and get one going.
Well, it sounds good, and I think that there's been a long enough break period between when you had the last one and COVID has happened, and people have ideas about where it should go, so.
Absolutely, and I mean, we've had time to think about what we could change and what we could do better, absolutely. So that's what we're doing. We've got a good group of folks with great ideas.
Okay.
And how to do this, so I will say, it has been a pleasure working with Ms. Hecker on this, she is a definite asset.
You're talking about Blair?
Blair. What did I say?
Ms. Hecker.
You used her last name, I just don't remember.
Oh.
A great, great, great person to work with.
I'm talking about Blair.
I would like, I would like to, I'd like to make a motion to approve the MOU in regards so this conversation can move forward, so this conversation can be held with Blair and our staff, as well as the business owners downtown. So I would like to approve this agreement to be able to start the conversation.
Second.
Second, by Commissioner Unger. Ask the clerk to call for a vote.
Commissioner Rosen?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Waldrich?
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Yes, thank you all for showing up tonight.
Thank you all for your time. We look forward to working with you guys. You all have a good evening.
I'm excited.
Yes.
We are too.
We'll go to the consent calendar.
Thank you for wearing pink for breast cancer awareness.
I'll turn it over to you.
For the consent calendar, item number one, the minutes from the work session September 12, 2022, and the regular meeting on September 26, 2022. Item number two, staff is seeking approval for an amendment to a contract with StanTech for completing the MS4 stormwater report, continuing outreach and education, and updating the feasibility study for the city's stormwater utility program. Just want to thank Katie Beard. She and her team realized some great cost savings, putting in some additional pipes and inlets, doing some of the work ourselves and some of our stormwater work, so saving some money to be able to add this additional work. Item number three is the transit dispatching software. Staff is seeking approval to award a three-year contract to Tripmaster for dispatching software for our transit department in the amount of $67,010 and $10 cents, and this cost is fully reimbursable. Item number four, the purchase of two dump trucks. Public Works is seeking approval to purchase two 4,500-horsepower dump trucks. These trucks will be used for hauling and distributing salt. We're going to be doing that pretty soon here, I think, plowing snow, hauling heavy equipment, and among other uses. Total cost is $121,852, and the funds are budgeted in our municipal aid account. Item number five on the consent calendar is staff is seeking approval to purchase a 2023 Chevy Type 1 ambulance remount from Atlantic Emergency Solutions in the amount of $239,152. This was budgeted in the fiscal year 23 budget, however, given the long time, the long time it takes to build this, plus, as we all know, some of the supplies and parts are on way back order, it may not arrive until fiscal year 24. Just as a side note, Coach, I mean, Coach Chief Briscoe will be presenting in November about some upcoming fire purchases because of the long wait time. Item number six, staff is requesting approval for the mayor to sign the agreement with the Department of Environmental Protection Division of Waste Management for the 2023 litter abatement grant award. This award is typically between about $14,000 and $19,000 and helps offset some of the costs for our crews to clean up litter and trash. Item number seven, staff is seeking authorization for the mayor to sign an MOU with the Kentucky Department of Homeland Security. The city does this every year with the state and allows the Kentucky Department Office of Homeland Security to access federal funds for the Intelligence Fusion Center. Item number eight, City Parks Department is seeking approval from the VOC to sign an MOU with the Frankfurt Youth Football League for the use of Harrod Football Field at Capital View Park. We already did item number nine. We'll do item number nine, I guess, with the amendment to the candlelight event MOU. Staff is seeking approval to amend the MOU to allow the addition of the ice skating rink, which will be sponsored by Commonwealth Credit Union and be held at the farmer's market. Item number 10, 11, I should say, simply removed one, I'll say 10, is the personnel actions. We are accepting the appointment of Jack Harrod in the IT Department on October 26, 2022, as our new network system administrator. Also accepting the appointment of James Step in the Police Department on October 10, 2022, as patrol officer. We're also accepting the resignation of Jonathan Dean in the Police Department on October 10, 2022, as patrol officer two, an authorized payout of accrued leave. Also accepting the resignation of Ephraim Fields in the Sewer Department on October 31, 2022, as a sewer tech, an authorized payout of accrued leave.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion about the consent calendar?
I did some research on two of the items, item number four, the dump trucks, and I thank the Public Works Department for looking into it.
We need to discuss those? Do you need to move those to the discussion items?
To the action items.
I was just going to comment on.
I think if it's just a comment and not a prolonged discussion.
Right, it's just a comment, that I did research, and also it was noted that the Public Works Department looked into electric options, and there's nothing that big yet. And I also looked into electric ambulances, and what I found is there are three types of ambulances, one, two, and three, and what they're requesting here doesn't exist yet, but if they would ever need a Type 2 electric ambulance, that there is that available. There's one US manufacturer, which is Lightning E-Motors, and something to keep in mind, since they also mentioned that there is IRA money that can be obtained to put toward electric vehicles, large commercial electric vehicles. So it's just two comments.
Thank you, and maybe we can say that in the, from now on, just say, wow, that we looked at it like. We have a motion and a second for the consent calendar. Ask the clerk to call for a vote.
Commissioner Rosen?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Waldrich?
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Yes, and the consent calendar is adopted, we'll move on to action items.
I'll sponsor.
First reading, sponsored by Commissioner Waldrich.
An ordinance rezoning a portion of the property located on Versailles Road with the address of 260 Versailles Road, more specifically described as PVA map number 08500021, from planned commercial district to highway commercial district. This ordinance approves a zone map amendment for the property with the address of 260 Versailles Road, more specifically described as PVA map number 08500021, from planned commercial district to highway commercial district.
I'll sponsor.
Next, second reading, sponsored by Commissioner Waldrich. Does it say second? First reading, sponsored by Commissioner Waldrich.
An ordinance establishing procedures for acquiring vacant and abandoned property within the City of Frankfurt and transferring it to useful ownership through the creation of the Frankfurt Neglected Property Development Program. This ordinance establishes procedures for purchasing vacant and abandoned property within the City of Frankfurt and transferring it to useful ownership through the creation of the Frankfurt Neglected Property Development Initiative.
I'd like to sponsor that.
Already had a sponsor.
It does? I thought this was the first reading.
Commissioner Waldrich did. It's your in favor of.
Thank you for being in favor of.
Thank you, Laura Ross, for this, and Eric Goxey. Any discussion on that? We'll get to it next time. We'll move on to the action item number three, a second reading.
Sorry, I was getting the- Okay. An ordinance amending City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances, Section 38.02, regarding application of local preferences and procurement. This ordinance amends Section 38.02 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances to provide an exception to the local preference requirements upon appropriate written finding by the city manager.
Motion to approve.
Motion, Commissioner Unger.
Second.
Second, Commissioner May, any discussion? Ask the clerk to call for a vote.
Commissioner Rosen?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Waldrich?
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Yes, motion passes, and action item number four, another second reading.
An ordinance amending various sections of City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances, Chapter 50, regarding garbage and solid waste. This ordinance amends various sections of City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances, Chapter 50, related to solid waste and garbage as follows. Amends 5001 to delete the obsolete term of responsible tenant. Amends 5002 to eliminate the ability of large multifamily dwellings to receive city service when it is not safe or reasonable, and not allow bulky items to be picked up without scheduling and paying for a bulk pickup. Amends 5003 to delete references to size 35-gallon carts, which are generally no longer supplied. Clarify that city supplies only one trash recycled container, and delete ambiguous language regarding container placement. Amends 5004 to delete requirements solely applicable to evictions and replace them with requirements related to all bulk pickups. Amends 5005 to clarify that procedures and schedules for leaf collection are set by the Public Works Director. Amends 5010 to not allow curbside recycling for apartment condominium buildings with more than eight units per lot of record. Amends 5011 to clarify which rules and regulations require Board of Commissioners approval, including clarifying that approval is required for any fees or penalties established by the Public Works Director. Amends throughout to delete references to outdated fee amounts and clarify that the Public Works Director will establish those fees, and amends throughout to change references from city bags to city overflow bags and unlimited pickup days to cleanup weeks.
Motion to approve.
Motion, Commissioner Unger.
Second.
And the second, Commissioner May, is there any discussion on this second reading?
Yes, I had a thought on when it's a housing area that has more than eight units, could we write into the ordinance that whoever picks up the trash should also supply recycling for those larger units?
Yes, yes, city manager.
I just clarified with the Public Works Director, we currently do not actually provide 2022.
trash services to those eight units, so this actually cleaned up the language, so that's why there was some confusion on that. So we don't currently offer them solid waste management services.
Right, so in here isn't it saying, basically, they have to contract for their own services?
Right.
And can we say that they should include recycling and regular garbage pickup? Can we suggest that?
I'm not certain of that. We can certainly take it back to the Public Works Department, look into some ideas surrounding that, and if we need to, we could always come back with an additional amendment if staff looks into that and sees them to-
Since we discussed this, I walked past and noticed more apartment buildings, and they only seem to have garbage, and so they don't have the convenience of other people of having a recycle bin that they could choose to put things in, and that we could suggest that that happened, or-
Sure, I think we could, we, no, Katie's, Katie's running, say goodnight.
I'm not sure that I have a definite answer, but I just wanted to make sure I understand. So you're asking about just suggesting, not necessarily requiring, that a private entity provide?
Well, I guess we're saying, we are picking it up, but somebody else should, and I'm just taking it a step further in saying they should pick up the garbage, and also they should offer recycling.
Yeah, I think that would be ideal. I don't know that we can require that, though. I think we can definitely increase our communication with them, with the private entities, and let them know that there are options such as recycle drop-off at Rouse for anybody, but definitely encourage them to provide the recycling along with their trash service. But I guess that's maybe a legal question, if we could-
To what extent we can actually require that?
Yeah, to what extent that needs to be.
That is something I would, I would need to look into, to see how much regulation we can provide there.
So we're not picking up trash for the units over, complexes over eight units now, right?
Right, we're not currently, and there was some, I guess, ambiguity in the language, so we just wanted to clarify that with this update, but we're not doing it now.
So it's something we're eliminating, something here.
Right, that's correct.
We're not eliminating recycling, because that's the way I thought we were, it sounded like we were going to stop recycling, but we weren't even recycling.
Right, it does read that way, it's a little confusing, but, yeah, we're currently not even servicing those units at all. It's already in the ordinance. There were just some, it was a little unclear, like, maybe if they could subdivide their property to find a loophole around this. So that's what we were trying to kind of clean up, is like, if the unit has more than eight, you just, we can't, for safety reasons, stop and pick up. They have to have a dumpster or some other kind of service, like Republic or Waste Management.
So we require them to pick up, to have trash services, though, right?
Yeah.
And we could require them to do recycle services also?
I don't know, I'm just not a hundred percent sure. I guess, maybe we can, yeah, we'll have to look into that.
Do you all want to go ahead with the one we have now, and amend it later?
And amend it later, I'm fine with that.
Is that acceptable?
We can do research and break back.
We can amend, we can amend anytime, so, to get this moving in the right direction.
We'll get a lot of this cleaned up with this today.
Yeah.
Yes.
Any discussion, or questions, or comments?
Businesses that handle their own waste usually seem to have dumpsters for recycle and trash.
Depending on the size of the unit.
But I mean, they, they aren't, we don't have it in writing that they have to, but they seem to.
Yeah.
So, I think it'd be good to state that everybody should do it, since that's one of our goals, so sustainability.
We're finding a way to incent that.
Yeah.
It should.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Ask the clerk to call for a vote.
Commissioner Rosen?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Waldrich?
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Yes, and that carries. And number five, Commonwealth alliances contracts.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The staff is seeking approval for expanding the contract with Commonwealth alliances for an additional four months, or a total of twelve thousand dollars, building upon the success of last year, and reaching out to the Board of Commissioners. You all have, you know, suggested several priorities for Commonwealth alliances to continue the work before the legislative session, including it till the end, and through June 2023.
Motion to approve.
Motion, a second, any discussion on this?
I just would like to make the comment that on bullet point four, it says engage with lawmakers on building a partnership among the state, KSU, and the city to ensure Exum Center is renovated as a joint community and university spots and wellness facility. So I appreciate that moving forward, as that conversation is moving forward, but I also just don't want lawmakers, or for, for this alliance group, just to start, stop with Exum, because there are other things, as Kentucky State just went under, you know, and submitted the state of emergency for their facility. So, yes, that would be something we were helping with, with Exum, but I think that it would be good on behalf of the city that if there's anything else the city can support in getting KSU more money for facilities across the board, athletic facilities, or anything of that nature, that they know that we're going to support beyond Exum Center.
Commissioner Unger, second.
I do think hiring Commonwealth alliances really helped us last session. I think the outcome was amazing, and I think it just helps us communicate with the state, and I'm very supportive. They did a great job.
I think it's been a real asset. It's great.
Worth it, definitely worth it.
Any other discussion? If not, ask the clerk to call for a vote.
Commissioner Rosen?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Waldrich?
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson?
And yes, and that motion carries. Which will bring us to action item number six, new investment policy stake order.
Yes, staff seeking approval of the municipal order that would update the city's investment policy. And of course, as our finance director, Alicia Boyd, walks up, just want to give her a big thanks, and the finance committee, for working hard to bring this forward. I know it was a priority for our finance director to, a number of, I think, one of three priorities that she had, that will help the city to invest in additional prudent investments, with a goal of earning more interest and more money for the city.
I technically don't have anything to present, other than just to- Ask that you please approve this. I do think it's in the best interest of the city, and as the city manager said, it was one of three priorities for me, finance committee, the minimum fund balance, and then this. So all of these financial policies that you're enacting, I do believe will benefit the city for many years to come. So I'm happy to answer any questions, otherwise I would just appreciate a vote of yes on this, and thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Let's say it's, we're modernizing our investment policy statement, we're bringing it up to 2022.
Yes, Mayor, we are.
So I'm excited about that.
Me too.
Future Commissions and Mayors will benefit from this.
Yes, thank you all so much, I really thank you.
I appreciate you continuing, moving in the right direction, and I can, and I commend you on being here just in the few years you have, and your checkmockboxing, all of those things that you discussed coming in, and that you would want to take care of, and you're doing that. So I appreciate you moving our financials in the right direction.
Thank you, Commissioner Waldrich. Thank you all.
Any other call for a vote?
Commissioner Rosen?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Waldrich?
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Yes, and thank you, Alicia, that motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Action item number seven.
Yes, staff is seeking approval to amend the municipal order on the career development program at the Police Department. Board of Commissioners created this program decades ago as an incentive for our patrol officers, and the Police Department would like to amend this. So it's not only a tool to reward our team for their expertise and their commitment, but also in attracting lateral transfers. So how this would work is that, you know, right now, our current patrol officers, when they reach ten years in certain criteria, and marksmanship, and physical ability, they earn senior master, senior patrol status with a financial incentive, and then after fifteen years, they can attain master patrol status, with reaching certain criteria, marksmanship, no recs, physical, you know, physical fitness. And we would like to offer this to laterals. So if they've been working ten years in another location, they can come here, and after one year of probation, they will be eligible for the senior and master patrol status. And I appreciate Chief Bowman and others, you know, we've been looking a lot at recruitment tools, especially for our tier-three employees and others, and appreciate his hard work in bringing this forward.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner May, and seconded by Commissioner Waldrich. It sounds like a great program to me. Any other discussion? No? Call for a vote.
Commissioner Rosen?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Waldrich?
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Yes, and that motion carries, thank you, Chief Bowman. Action item number eight, health insurance premiums.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Staff seeking approval in setting employee medical premiums, and one reason we wanted to bring this back, to discuss it with you all, and for, for setting this, because it's been six years since health insurance premiums have been raised here at the city, and recently some benefit expenses have exceeded our budget allocations. Staff is recommending a modest five percent increase in premiums for staff, which will be about, about two, depending on the policy you have, two to sixteen dollars per month only. And, yes, monthly increase, depending on the type of insurance and the number that is insured. So we submit this for your review, and hopefully approval.
Okay.
Sixteen dollars per month. Yes.
So eight dollars per paycheck, if you're at the highest level.
Yes.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion.
A second.
And a second, is there any discussion on this? I guess the questions for the city manager. Well, we had more payouts last year, right? Any others, discussion? If not, we'll ask the clerk to call for a vote.
Commissioner Rosen?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Waldrich?
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Yes, and that motion carries, and action item number nine.
Thank you, Mayor. A majority of the Board of Commissioners agreed to have the paid parental leave brought forward for a vote today. However, I think the members all had different ideas about the, the type or the length of the paid parental leave. So we bring these four options forward for y'all's discussion today. One was twelve weeks, one was six weeks, one was four weeks, and the final one was a gradual reduction over five years, starting off at twelve weeks, and going down to four weeks. And Kathy is here, from her vacation, thank you, Kathy, for being available for any questions. You can see from a memo that she did, she did a great, we did a survey of staff, we might have some other benefits to bring forward, perhaps in the coming months, if the Board of Commissioners are interested, as we continuously look at ways to be competitive in the market, and to offer various attraction and retention tools for our employees.
All right, so we have Kathy here, do we want to start with a motion, or any discussion?
Can I have her?
Yes, Commissioner Waldrich.
I don't really have a question, I was just, in regards to these four, if Kathy could share, as the Director of HR, in what you think is the best interest of the commission to move forward for our staff, what do you think out of the four would behoove us, as far as HR, as finances and things of that nature, what you think would be the best?
Oh, I would be happy to make a recommendation, but I think it's really difficult, because it depends on the target that we most want to hit.
One of the things I tried to highlight in the memo is that it's apparent, to me, based on the survey respondents, the paid parental leave seems to be quite important to our tier-three employees. But then if you look overall at all of our employees, then short-term disability starts to show, like, that's something that our, our whole employee-based values. So Commissioner Waldrich, I think it's very hard for me to say really what I would recommend, because I'm not positive exactly what target is going to be the most valuable for you all to hit. Like, if we want to, if we want to vote on something that appears to be the most popular now to all of our employees, I think that the short-term disability, based on the survey, and based on affordability, appeared to be quite popular. But we know that we're going to have an increasingly, increasingly larger number of tier-three employees. And so when I think about that from a recruitment perspective, or from a what do employees, or future employees value, then that really, I think, leans toward the paid parental leave.
Kathy, thank you for being here on your vacation, by the way. I really appreciate it, and all the extra work you've done along the way. It's taken us a bit to get here, but I want to thank you for all that work. You know, for me, oh, sorry. For me, this is-
Oh, this is my pleasure.
Oh, thank you.
She's wacky.
Sorry. For me, it's just been about, you know, Frankfurt, the capital city, leading by example, and I think, like you said, I don't, I think it was like by twenty, thirty, seventy-five percent of the workforce is going to be that age range, that's probably tier-three, and they're looking at certain benefits, like paid parental leave. So if we don't act now, we're just going to fall behind. And, you know, paid parental leave, it gives better health outcomes for families and children, and I think we want to support working families, especially our city's employees that want to continue to grow their families. So it's, yeah, I could go on and on, but this is definitely important to me personally, but I'm, I'm not doing this for myself, I'm doing it for city staff. And I know that, you know, one of the big things we focused on is what will this cost, what will this cost, but there are also benefits in, in retention, and the potential cost of losing someone that might go on maternity leave or paternal leave, and then maybe they decide they don't have enough time and they don't come back. So there's, I mean, there's a spectrum of situations where we could lose a city staff member. So there's, there's a lot to think about. I think, like we discussed last time, Versailles is really the closest to us that's doing six weeks. So I, I'm going, I'd be willing to make a motion to start with six weeks, if other board members want to discuss that. And then I, I do think talking about other benefits in the future, sooner than later, is something we really need to do as well.
Commissioner Unger, is that a motion?
I would like to make a motion to start with six weeks.
I will second.
Paid parental leave.
And we have a motion for six weeks?
And I will second, I think, starting in the middle, as she stated, and revising maybe later on, or coming back around on what those look like.
Yeah.
I think, I think I can agree to that.
Thank you.
And I do think we need to add something, we have to be, now that the pension is not so much of a benefit as it used to be, we have to find other ways to compete, and there's nothing like having good employees, and, and that do a good job. You know, and we want to, I think the city needs to be the leader, if we can. So I'm, I'm in favor of some type of benefit. You know, I think twelve weeks was probably a lot, four weeks I was really on board with, six weeks, it's a difference, but we know that there is a surrounding community that is already offering that, so maybe that's where we need to be. Also, I would look at short-term disability in the future as well, for those that can't, not everyone's going to be able to use parental leave.
Right.
And there are other issues that employees will face, and they need some security, so, but today, we're talking about paid parental leave, and we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion about this? Your questions for Kathy?
It looks like it's going to be about a hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, if we do about six, roughly.
If they do what, fifteen, fifteen occurrences per year, is that what we're assuming?
About fifteen qualifying events, yes. About 15 qualifying events, yes.
Could be more, could be less.
Correct, correct.
And then the short-term disability for two-thirds of income benefit is right over $50,000 if we were to look at that in the future.
Well, we have a motion and a second, and if there's no other discussion, we'll ask our city clerk to call for a vote.
Commissioner Rosen?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Waldrich?
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Yes.
And that motion carries.
It's big. Thanks, guys.
It's a big benefit. We'll move on. It doesn't stop there. We're going to go on to action item number 11. I think we're skipping over 10. Could you approve that?
Yes. Public Works Solid Waste Division is seeking approval of the Franklin County Five-Year Solid Waste Plan. This was presented previously at the work session on October 10th.
Yes, Commissioner Rosen?
Well, I guess on October 10th, I didn't read it over carefully. I read it more carefully today and I noticed it mentions some things that will shortly no longer be true, like large amounts of stuff picked up six times a year versus now we're going to three times a year. And it also implies that we'll continue to do this for the next five years without charging. And we're talking about fees for solid waste. So I'm not sure if the actual resolution or the information we're putting together, which will go to the state, needs to be updated.
This is a different plan. This is the five-year plan for the city and the county.
Right, so how does that correlate?
Yeah, this is the, the county plan that they prepared. I think we're asking for support of a resolution, accepting it. So if there are things in there that aren't 100% accurate, we need to pass those comments along to them and see, I apologize, I don't know exactly where this is in the process, but I think we can still get edits made to this plan before it's enacted at January 1st. So I will confirm that. And pass along those comments that those items need to be updated.
Yeah, and there could be a few more. I didn't need it.
Yeah, we'll go through it again.
City manager, okay.
I just wanted to add that some of these changes, we didn't know whether or not they were going to pass or be enacted. So we had to, we don't know, so we can't, some of those changes, even though we think something may change, they, we don't know for sure. So we couldn't, we couldn't make those changes right now. But some we will know now that the ordinance has been passed.
So I guess maybe finding when the deadline is and we can update it.
Okay.
For an accurate picture to the state.
Right, yep. I'll talk to Brittany tomorrow.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Any other discussion? See none. Ask clerk to call for a vote.
Commissioner Rosen?
Yes, with updates. Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Waldrich?
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Yes, with that.
With that.
Thank you.
And action item number 12.
Staff seeking approval to surplus two 2006 Chevy trucks, one 2008 Ford pickup, one message board and miscellaneous light fixtures. All are beyond useful life or are not functioning properly.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on this? No. Ask the clerk to call for a vote.
Commissioner Rosen?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Waldrich?
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Yes, and that motion carries. And we'll move to action item number 13.
Yes. Staff and particularly Chuck Knowles is seeking approval to enter into an MOA with KYTC on the, for the raise grant. This MOA will allow, or will outline how the city will be reimbursed by KYTC as we expend the grant funds. Previously, the Board of Commissioners had approved the raise grant agreement. It's at September 26 meeting. And with approval tonight, the city will issue a notice to proceed to strand associates who the contract was awarded to.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion about the raise grant?
I have one. My question would be, I guess, it mentioned the Columbia Gas Frankfurt Plant Board, and I know this was brought up on Second Street and wishing that we had did some of the electrical, I guess, wires to be underground.
Okay.
I'm not sure, I haven't really paid attention to the Home Street area, but I think that maybe that should be something that we look into to maybe see if we can start grounding things underground.
Under the planning process, yes.
Yeah, so we can start thinking about that. So I, I don't think we looked into that for Second Street, but I would like to do that for Home Street.
I know there was some discussion with the plant board, because I was on the board at that time for Second Street, and there are some problems with putting things underground, like every four years you have to dig it up and redo it, which comes around faster than you think. So, and also, Home Street is technically a flood zone, so, but certainly, I think it's good to raise it to consider that.
Yeah, I think it should be in the discussion. If it happens, great, if not, because of whatever reasons.
They were able to put a lot of Second Street underground, but they couldn't do it by the school.
Yeah. Just a discussion.
One thing to offer, and thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Waldrich, because I think if the commission is interested, I know I've had some conversations with Frankfurt Plant Board, if this is an overall goal, it's a good opportunity that sometime in the near future to sit down and start planning out like areas that you want to, to work together on undergrounding, if there's key properties or something, but start to have those discussions because we probably have some areas that could benefit from it, you know, particularly downtown or tourism, but also safety issues for other neighborhoods too, that if you can look at a long-term plan.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Not, we will call for a vote.
Who was the second? Was that you?
Maybe you were the second.
Lisa.
You were.
Oh, well, Lisa was first and I was the second.
I, see, there you go.
Okay, we're going to call for a vote.
I was like, oh.
I was distracted. We'll call for a vote.
Commissioner Rosen?
Yes, this will be a good opportunity for Home Street.
Yes, indeed.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Waldrich?
Yes, indeed, because I won't feel like I'm on a roller coaster anymore.
Going down Home Street.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Yes, and that carries as well. Move on to number 14, Frankfurt Transit Authority Grant.
And speaking for Chuck Knowles, he's also, of course, very interested in seeking approval to award a contract to Patriot Engineering, who will be providing third-party construction materials sampling and testing services for the transit center parking garage in the amount of $58,946.
Motion to approve. Motion, Commissioner Waldrich, second. Commissioner Unger?
We're trying to meet.
Okay.
Any discussion? No questions, no discussion. Ask the clerk to call for a vote.
Commissioner Rosen?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Waldrich?
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Yes, and that carries.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to turn this discussion over to our city solicitor, Laura Ross, to explain about the request and the increase of the funding towards legal funding.
Yes, this is another request to increase funding to Von Pettit, our legal counsel, in the litigation that was brought against the city by Kyle Thompson. We are in need of additional funds to continue to defend this litigation that was brought against the city. So we are making another request for an increase. I am more than happy to answer any questions you all may have related to this or to insurance coverage. I know there have been some questions raised, and so if there's anything I can answer for you all, I'm happy to do so.
Do you mind to give a overview quickly? I know you sent out an email to us. It did not say confidential, but, you know, just so the community is aware that we are doing this due diligently and try not to waste any money that we can. But if you could give a quick overview of that, that would be great.
Absolutely. It's my understanding that there was a statement made that said that, or a question regarding why KLC had denied the litigation costs for this lawsuit. And I think there were some comments potentially saying that KLC, potentially CAECO as well, which has nothing to do with us, that's actually involving county insurance, but that they never deny coverage for this type of claim or for litigation. And I just want to say that the reality is that, and anyone actually familiar who does their research regarding city insurance requirements will realize, is that denial of coverage happens fairly frequently. Under our public officials' policy, there are numerous exclusions, numerous, where KLC will not provide coverage. And that's very, very typical of an insurance policy. So, for example, the one that was, that was stated first in our denial of coverage response from KLC was that they do not cover, they always deny coverage when it is brought by an insured against another insured. In this case, the litigation was brought by an insured, the former commissioner, against an insured, the city of Frankfurt. Under the policy right there, coverage is denied. I want to make it very clear that this decision, when they deny coverage, they are not looking at the merits of the case. The decision has nothing to do with the validity of the city's submitted claim or the validity of the city's defense to that claim, likelihood of success in the litigation. None of those things come into play. This is simply a policy exclusion. And it's, it's used fairly frequently. That or one of the many others. So that's the first update about insurance coverage. I hope that kind of clears it up. And then secondly, I think you all had some questions about the expense. And the answer to that is, yes, this litigation is expensive. Yes, it is. Just to clarify, and I think this might help you all, I know that we have seen numerous motions and filings in this case over the months. And it was to be expected, and I'm sure that everyone understands, that the plaintiff was appealing the removal decision. Sure. But additionally, there were numerous other claims filed against the city of Frankfurt to initial legal actions. We did get those consolidated to streamline this a little bit. But in addition to appealing the removal, Commissioner Thompson, or former Commissioner Thompson had several other claims that were raised in the litigation, including a claim that the city violated the Open Records Act, that the city violated its own ethics code, that the city violated the plaintiff's due process rights, that the city violated his equal protection rights, and that the city violated his First Amendment rights. So just to clarify, that's why this litigation is complicated, more so than some other that we face, because there are multiple claims and issues to be worked through. Now, I do want to point out that the removal, the pending removal appeal is still going through the normal court process, and the judge has not rendered any opinion on that. However, regarding all of the other claims, and that would be the open records, the ethics code, the due process rights, the equal protection rights, and the First Amendment violation claims, in August, the judge actually granted the city's motion to dismiss on all of those claims and ruled in our favor. We are now in the period where the plaintiff is allowed to file motions to alter, amend, or vacate, file motions for a new trial, and eventually potentially appeal this decision. So there is a process here that has to be followed. It is time-consuming, it is complicated, but we do want to continue to defend the city rigorously as we always do. And so we will be, we're coming now with an increased request, and there may be more depending on how far this goes.
Ask Commissioner Waldrich.
So my question, and you may not be able to answer, and I understand. My question would be, with this increase, we are now into the end of October, we're going into November. Our previous commissioner, that's the plaintiff here, is running for reelection. If he is to get a seat, or when, what, however you want to see that, if he gets a seat in November, and then in January, if he were to get a seat, he were to take office January 1, what does, how does that affect this? And will a, if he is seated in January 1, would a seating official still be able to continue doing this against the city? And will that continue? And then if that happens, with what you just shared with us earlier about it covering insurance, that would not then go back and cover him if he were to get back on the commission? Does that make sense?
I think, I think the question...
Okay.
I think the question you're bringing up, I've heard actually from several of you, because I think you're hearing from the community.
Yes.
And that is, does someone, and correct me if I'm not phrasing this right, but does a sitting elected official have the right to pursue litigation against the city that he or she is serving for? And the answer to that is absolutely they do. And, and any, any one of you all could sue the city and you have the right to do so. There are no rules against that, nor will there ever be. So what will happen come election time and once we see the results of the election? I'm sorry, I cannot predict.
Right.
What will happen from there with the litigation?
Because wouldn't it be pointless?
Oh, that it...
If he were to get a seat to be, this timeframe has already passed for the due diligence of that office that would have been held.
Right.
At December 31st.
Right. And so that will be a consideration that...
If possible, okay.
That I'm sure we'll be discussing.
Thank you.
And thank you for that explanation.
That was well done.
Yes.
And I don't have any questions.
Motion to approve.
I think the city manager has...
The city manager has.
I think Laura Ross, you mentioned, and I can't recall, November 3rd, there was going to be a...
Oh, yes. November 3rd is the next. As I said, the plaintiff has two motions currently before the court regarding these dismissed claims. So there's a motion to alter, amend, or vacate the judgment before the court, and I believe a, a motion for a new trial. And so both of these motions will be heard, I believe it is November 3rd.
And so to, and getting why we still, we owe over $5,000 to the Von Pettit Group and why we're asking for $30,000 more, there is still ongoing litigation that we have to defend the city, so we need more money.
Motion to approve.
Motion, Commissioner Unger?
Second.
My second, Commissioner May. Ask the clerk to call for a vote.
Commissioner Rosen?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Waldrich?
I guess I have to say yes, because this is going to be ongoing, no matter how much it pains me to use our city funds to do this, I guess I will have to say yes, because we have people's work that still needs to be done. So, thank you.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Yes. And that motion carries, which leads us to new business. Commissioner Unger?
Okay. Well, I've got just a couple of things, but one thing that I've been wondering about is what we could do as a city to look at our, the city's current code of ethics. I was wondering the last time it was looked at or updated, and then how we could, of course, with recent issues, what we could do to address that and change and update. Sorry, I'm rambling now.
I'll follow up with that. Commissioner Unger, and also ICMA has a person who's head of ethics for, and works with all communities across the nation on this very same topic, so I'll contact her.
If I could have one thing, if that's okay, Mayor? Just to accompany that, yes, our ethics code, I think you'd asked, when was the last time that it was, that it was reviewed? It's been a very long time. And many, most cities across the Commonwealth at least have very similar ethics provisions, but I do know there's a lot of interest in reforming and strengthening ethics provisions by other cities as well. So we look forward, I think, to, to looking into that and seeing what provisions we could do to help the city.
Yes, Commissioner Unger.
If it's the will of the board, absolutely.
Yes.
Yes.
I have a question.
We can talk about that.
I have a question here first, real quick.
Okay, yeah, yeah, sure.
So, and I would like to add, I know that you and I spoke recently in regarding to ethics, and so, you know, I'd also like to add that in giving the times, you know, of different meetings across the world of city commissioners and courts and things of that nature, I also would make sure that we're putting a focus on safety of officers and elected, as well as staff, in regards to meetings or our city space and things of that nature. So I think I'd like to definitely look into that earlier now rather than later, just so we can also have that up to date as well when we convene in meetings and people are coming...
We are on the same wavelength, because my next comment was going to be, do we have anything writing that protects staff in working with other staff if they're uncomfortable, as well as elected officials? So we are thinking about the same thing here.
Do you want me to?
No, no, you don't.
I can answer that actually a little, and of course Kathy hopefully is continuing with her vacation and might be able to give us a little more insight. But I believe that we have addressed this, if not in writing, through a formal policy, then definitely in the past, where, as in any workplace, you have times when someone would prefer not to have a one-on-one meeting or would like a certain setting for legitimate, for legitimate reasons. And so the city has always been really open to allowing individuals who may have a reason to want another person present to do so. We might put restrictions on who that could be, maybe, maybe not your spouse in the city meeting, but definitely an appropriate other party to be present is, is not going to be a problem. And we can certainly, as, as we start reviewing ethics requirements at the will of the board, we can certainly look into strengthening that and making sure it's clear.
And I, I think that, you know, along with that is that, you know, maybe we, when we move forward, that we go ahead and announce who those people are, send them to training to make sure that there's no biases and things of that nature. So when, if I decide I want to meet with Commissioner Unger and I would like to have a mediator in their sitting, we already know who we can choose from a mediation standpoint, whether that's three or four people who are ready to go for the city to mediate at any time.
That's great. Thank you.
That's great.
Any other new business? Commissioner Unger?
Yeah, one other comment. I know our, the city trolley just wrapped up the season on Saturday. I may have mentioned this before, I'm wondering, you know, what we can do to try to run that year-round. I understand that, you know, weather may not always be the best through the winter, so it may not be able to run some days, but, you know, tourists don't stop coming to Frankfurt, and our citizens don't, you know, would love to enjoy the trolley during, during those like warmer weather days. So just thought I'd bring that up. And also know that there's probably some transit staffing issues. We probably don't have enough people on staff. When people get sick or they're out, that means our citizens can't ride certain routes. So just thought I'd throw that out there.
Sorry, I could just picture the trolley on, electric trolley, because she wants electric with big tires in the snow. But I was just going to ask, have we reviewed at any point the ridership on the trolley?
Yeah, actually, Robin Antinucci is working on those numbers right now. And she sent out an email to a few people last Friday about, to the end of the trolley season, so.
And I would, speaking of transit, new business, I would be interested in evaluating the charges that we, I think we charge a quarter for riding. Is that right?
I believe it's just recently gone up to 50 cents, but yeah.
Well, we'll see what those, what those numbers generate, because when I ask what the revenue we generate from that, it just seemed like, in the grand scheme of things, a nominal amount, and should we consider just doing away and making it a free transit? And if we're talking about accessibility for certain groups of people, let's just not put any barriers. I know, it's something I'd like to consider.
We can research.
Yeah, we can look into that. I'll talk to Jennifer. I'm not sure federally with their rules if they're required to. I know we've made it free during COVID and, and other extenuating circumstances, so we'll look into that.
Just something I'd like to consider. Any other? Yes, Commissioner Waldridge?
I guess it would go to Ms. Katie here. Dealing with the trolley, the sitting manager and myself met with Kentucky State University, and we brought up some different things, and we, I brought up the idea of maybe doing KSU tours. Oh, gosh, I forgot his name. The VP brought up that, you know, we, we want to do around, things around Frankfurt for Kentucky State students. So maybe we could look into like freshman orientation week, that we could take the trolley and pick up KSU students somehow, and then take them around and show them where their City Hall is, where they can come here, where Sergeant Clerk is, and things of that nature. I don't know, possibly to do a quick tour to let, let them know and welcome them to Frankfurt of all those different spots.
Okay.
And the history tour, I guess, with Mr. Hatter, I believe it is.
Just Mr. Unger.
Yeah, we'll look into that. I know if it's a time when the trolley is en route, we can't pull it from route to do something like that, but we may possibly be able to do that while the trolley's off route. So I'll talk to Jennifer and look into that more as well.
Okay, that'd be great. My other thing was to bring up that our, Frankfurt's very own Gibson Wright will be having a concert November 4th, Friday at 7:00 PM. He has 11 Nashville recorded songs that is going to be released. It is a free concert, and it's going to be a launch slash release, so I'm super proud of Gibson Wright and all that he's doing and being able to come back to Frankfurt and show off his talents on November the 4th. So I hope everyone can be downtown for that, so let's support him.
With the city stage.
With the city stage. There we go. See, we support. And then, other than that, just a quick update, well, I guess it's O Business, so I won't, can we go on?
How about unfinished business? Any unfinished business?
Just an update with Kentucky State University. City manager and I, like I said, met with him about a week ago with that staff, and so one of the main issues that we did discuss was the Exum Center, and we are moving ahead with that and seeing what options we have with the Exum Center. I know that myself and the mayor will be sitting on a meeting on Wednesday, so we just want the, there's a lot of questions coming from the community. Where are we? What are we going to do? We can't say for sure yet, but we are, those, open for communication right now on the city side, the county side, the public side, as well as the city, and we're all communicating together. So looking for updates, hopefully maybe to come, as well as the state side, because the governor is in on that conversation well. So I'm super excited. We've brought everyone together, and we're going to have this discussion moving forward on Wednesday for what that outcome could be for the Exum Center in the Poole area, for our community, and for Kentucky State students.
And we're working on a plan, so.
Yes.
Any other unfinished business?
Follow-up from the, took a tour of the training facilities down on Bald Mob Road with the police, and I didn't know if that, if we had any movement with that conversation about upgrading the facilities or if there was any...
Shooting range.
Yes, yes, yes.
That's something that we would prepare for, for fiscal year '24, but in the scheme of wanting to get you out and show other places, that, that was a request last year from the police department to upgrade the shooting range, and we didn't have the funds, but wanted to bring it back and also show you the conditions, and then to be able to consider it for next year's budget.
Okay.
But we'll also continue to look for grants, grant funding for it as well.
Exciting. Because I'd like to be able to look at it.
The other?
I just wanted to mention, it's been very dry out, if you've noticed that, and I know there was a memo that came out about fire ban in the county, and that people should be really cautious about any type of fire outside because it is so dry.
It was a burn ban.
It is a burn ban.
Any others? If not...
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are now adjourned.
Woo! Great job. Let's go.